Thank you, Mr. Gilmar. We'll call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone, to tonight's action meeting. First off, we're going to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. First off, I'm going to read the suspension of policy 006.1, attendance at meetings via electronic communications. So we recommend the suspension of board policy 006.1 with specific regard to the limitation of the number of school board directors participating in a meeting electronically and the requirement of having majority of the board physically present at a meeting location. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mr. Casa. All in favor, say aye. Raise your hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we will be moving on then to the Audience of Citizens. Mr. Gilmar, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make public comments this evening? And while I get that ready, I will read the statement.
Yeah, there are some hands going up, so if you'd like to read your statement, we'll be ready as soon as you're done.
This meeting is being videotaped through community cable channels. Individuals attending the meeting virtually and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania sunshine law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To ensure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board raise their hand electronically and state their name and address. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the board president may ask an individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. Okay. Mr. Gilmar.
All righty, first up, we have Mr. Patchell. He has his hand raised in the interface for other folks on the meeting tonight. If you do have a comment or question or comment tonight for audience citizens, raise the blue hand. Mr. Patchell, I have opened your mic, and as soon as you unmute, you are ready to begin.
Okay, thank you very much. My name is William Patchell. I reside at 404 Bonnie Lane. I've owned my house for 48 years, not 48 years, 28 years, had two children go to the district. So I'd give you a little bit of a background. And I have a few things written down here. First off, what is the expected headcount for the Transportation Department? I think you had 148 bus drivers. How many are over 60? They're probably vulnerable to medical conditions. I hope you take this into consideration. I, I think you need to find out within two weeks, hey, is anybody here not going to come back anymore? Because I'm telling you what, you're gonna have a hard time. I see there's a sign out on the street, bus drivers, $1,000 hiring bonus. You, you gotta deal with this realistic stuff. You think this is the Army? They're not gonna, they don't have to do anything. Everyone is a volunteer. Hard to believe, I know that. Okay, you need to assess the performance of the students from last year. They were online. How did they do? Well, we, you need to bring out some data. What happened? Are they behind? Are they where they're supposed to be? It doesn't sound like anybody was doing anything. In Philadelphia, only 50% of the kids even clocked on. That's not real good. I know Dr. Height is, is pretty optimistic, but I tell you, from a, from a spectator's point of view, 50%? Come on. This is, it's crazy. Okay, so I'm not a big, big advocate of a lot of kids. I understand some are not well behaved. But I'm telling you, these high school kids, the more they do the computer and stay at home, they're going to be proficient to go to Harvard? Yeah, Harvard's gonna have 3 million students unbeknown because they can take as many people as they can possibly get people to cut a check for the tuition. Oh, you're from Harvard? So am I, my next door neighbor, so three guys down the street. Do you see what's going on? They want the money. They don't care if your kid passes or not. Okay? Now, did you, did you get with the teachers yet? You got an idea how many people might not be coming back? There was a woman on TV, 28 years, she says, I'm not gambling two extra years for, for a few pennies because I'm out of here. I don't want to kill my husband and myself too. So, and above all, how many in the, how many people do you think in the district are going to be unemployed? It, all, hey, they just got hit. All the restaurants are closed, all the bars are closed. And Mr. Shiroki, I know you'll love this, they're gonna be piling down to the courthouse and every, you're gonna lose so much taxable base, I can't even put my hands around it. So I had more things, but here he goes, out of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patchell, as always. Mr. Gilmar, is anyone else that would like to make a comment?
All right, we'll give a second here for anybody else that has a comment, you know, raise the blue, raise hand in the interface. I'll see your hand raised here, and then I'll, I'll open up your mic if you'd like to make a comment. Okay, Mrs. Stoll, seeing no hands, just a reminder for our attendees that we do have a second Audience of Citizens at the end of the meeting if you would like to make comment at that time. That is it for Audience of Citizens tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmar. All right then, we will move on to approval of the minutes from the July 7, 2020 action meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I second? Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, next up then will be the committee reports. First off, the Personnel Committee. The Personnel Committee of the Board met virtually in executive session on July 7, 2020 to discuss matters of personnel, including the appointment of staff, staffing considerations, and collective bargaining. End of report. Does anyone have any comments or questions? Mr. Roach, I see you have company. All right. Moving on next, then to the Finance Committee. Mr. Fusco?
The Finance Committee has not met since last action meeting on June 18, 2020. The next meeting is scheduled for August 11, 2020 at 6:00 PM. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Fusco. Does anyone have any comments or questions? And seeing none, we will move on to Safe Schools. Mr. Casa, please.
Thank you, Mrs. Stoll. The Safe Schools Committee met on June 29, 2020. Mr. Dur provided a public overview of his annual report to the Board of Directors, which was delivered in executive session on June 18. The committee also discussed training goals for security staff moving into the next school year. The next meeting of the Safe Schools Committee will take place on Monday, July 27, 2020, at 6:00 PM and will be held in a virtual format. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Casa. Does anyone have any comments or questions for Mr. Casa? Seeing none, we will go on to the Education Curriculum and Instruction Committee Report. Mrs. G, please.
Hey. Beginning with the class of 2023, student class rank will no longer be reported unless there is a specific request for it. Because class rank and a large graduating class does not accurately reflect the academic achievements of students, it can place students at a disadvantage when applying to colleges. Many colleges no longer reflect applicants' class rank and place more emphasis on grades in college prep courses and in other courses, strength of curriculum and SAT and ACT scores. Eliminating class rank should help alleviate the pressure students feel when their grades do not align with their class rank. Students can also feel more comfortable enrolling courses that interest them rather than AP courses in order to boost their class rank. Canvas Professional Development, the committee received information about the Canvas digital learning platform that will be used by North Penn School District this school year. Canvas offers more robust features than Google Classroom, the platform that the district currently uses. This platform can be used across grades K to 12 with its consistent format and can support all learning moves, in person, hybrid, and virtual. In addition, student rosters can be automatically created from infinite campus. This platform allows access to many of the district's digital curriculum resources and has an assessment tool. Training for teachers will be available beginning the week of July 20. There will also be training offered for students and parents. The next ECI meeting is scheduled for August 4 at 6:00 PM. End of report.
Thank you, Mrs. G. Does anyone have any comments or questions for Mrs. G? Seeing none, we'll move then on to the Policy Committee Report. Mr. Fusco, please.
Thank you, Mrs. Stoll. Okay, this is an update from the regular, regular policy meeting of July 6, 2020. Currently, the 200 policy series, which is student focused, is under review. This is the second group of policies from the series that has been reviewed. The majority of the content of the policies that were reviewed and discussed is taken from the Pennsylvania School Code. Also, the committee was given notice of intent to repeal policies that will be replaced by new policies. Those policies, as well as the policies reviewed at the June 16 Policy Committee Meeting, are on this evening's agenda for a first reading. In addition, the committee reviewed the equity statement and beliefs of the board drafted by PSBA for individual districts to use and tailor to reflect the stage where they are in addressing equity and racial issues. The statement is on the agenda for tonight for approval. And I would like to comment that the the racism, the anti-racism statement that's being passed tonight has action items attached to it, one of which is to pass this equity statement, which we're doing tonight, and another was to meet with students as a board to discuss issues surrounding race and their personal experiences with it to help better inform the board as we move forward, trying to develop policies that make the district more equitable. And that meeting occurred last night with Barbara Moore Williams. Every board member was in attendance, as well as six students who were willing to give up their time in the summer to discuss this with us. We're going to continue, and then there were some administrators as well. Dr. Deanna Waters, Marjorie De Ag, for example. So we are going to continue that conversation in the next week or so. But I just wanted to point that out, that those actions are already being moved on. So like I said, we are a board of beliefs and action, and we are moving forward. So the next policy meeting is scheduled for September 8, 2020 at 5:00 PM. Any questions? All right, end of report.
Hi. So I just want to comment that last night during that meeting, I thought that the candidness of the students that participated was wonderful. And I do hope that the students and any others that choose to participate go forward, recognize that, as Mrs. G said last night, this board is open and receptive, and they can feel safe speaking with us going forward.
I echo those sentiments. They were very, there was a lot of candor on their part, and we appreciate that. We very much want to get to the heart of the issues that keep this district from, from achieving its highest potential in regard to equity, and that can only happen with that candor. So we appreciate those students and look forward to having further conversations with them. Thank you.
Yes, we do. I think some of those students were seniors. So, you know, it was very, especially nice of them to come back and do that conversation with us. So considering that they, you know, have already graduated. So we appreciate that very much.
Demonstrating their commitment to North Penn long term.
Yes.
Madam President, I, I was having connectivity problems. I, I just want to make a comment for the ECI section. When it came down to class rank, that for any community member that's watching this tonight, you know, the presentation and the work done by the administration, I thought was very enlightening. And this actually ties into the comments just made. Having students be part of that conversation and that type of inclusivity, it made an impact on me, learning about that issue and class, class rank. I'm just very happy to see that North Penn is, you know, joining the 21st century and moving in that direction of progress as well with this type of policy change.
I'll just note, just as the Chair of ECI, Dr. Bauer certainly has taken the lead on that, and I very much appreciate, I know that myself and Mr. Fusco and Mr. McCain from the very beginning have communicated our support for, and in fact, our student representative on our panel also communicated their support for needing to, this is really an archaic thing, class rank, and it's not something, not only are we joining, we're leading because I think there are districts that are starting to do this work. The difference is, our board is brave enough to just do it. And Dr. Bauer was certainly able to present the evidence to show that this is what needed to be done. So thank you for your work on that, Dr. Bauer.
My pleasure. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Dr. Bauer. Okay, if there are no further questions, then we will move on to the Facilities and Operations Report. And that will be Mr. Casa, please.
President, the Facilities and Operations Committee met on June 29, 2020. Mr. Schneider provided a request by the Hatfield Elementary School Sixth Grade Committee, requested to give Hatfield Elementary School two benches for their playground. This gift request is included in this evening's agenda. Mayor Herbert of Lansdale and Mr. Kraus, also of Lansdale Borough, presented the Lansdale Electric Rate Comparison and Rate Structure to the Committee. They also provided information regarding how the Lansdale Borough's revenues support the local community. Mr. Schneider then presented an update of the Knapp Elementary and Crawford Stadium construction projects that were provided by ICS, the district's construction management firm. In addition, the Knapp Elementary preliminary schedule was presented to the Committee. Three quotes were presented to the Committee for the moving and storage of the Knapp Elementary library books. These quotes are provided for information purposes and are under the public bid threshold, which do not meet the required board action. Prior to the complete demolition of Crawford Stadium, items were harvested from the site for future fundraising opportunities. More information regarding fundraising opportunities will be provided in the future. Mr. Schneider then discussed the planned improvements to the varsity softball and junior varsity baseball fields, along with the current maintenance of the middle school athletic fields. The final item discussed was the current status of the 2020 to 2021 school year supplies. The next Facilities and Operations meeting is scheduled for Monday, July 27, 2020, at 6:30 PM and will be held in a virtual format. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Casa. Does anyone have any comments or questions for Mr. Casa? Seeing none, so we will move then on to the North Monaco Technical Career Center. Mrs. Ramich? Mrs. Ramich, is that you for the North Monaco Technical Career Center? Oh, it's Mr. McCain.
I believe that's Mr. McCain.
Okay, sorry about that. Mr. McCain?
No problem. Thank you, Mrs. Stoll. The North Monaco Technical and Career Training Center Joint Operating Committee did not meet this month. Students and community members are encouraged to explore the wonderful programs offered right here in our own neighborhood at nmtcc.org. The next meeting, the North Monaco JOC, will be held virtually on Monday, August 17 at 7:00 PM. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. McCain. Apologize again. Is there any questions for Mr. McCain? No, okay, then we'll move on to the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit, which is Mrs. Ramich.
Thank you, Mrs. Stoll. The MCIU Board met on June 24 to review and approve program budgets, approve personnel actions, hear an update from the Government Relations Team, acknowledge individuals who were elected by the sending districts to serve on the MCIU Board, and nominate and elect officers for the 2020-2021 school year. Julian Ramich from the North Penn School District was acknowledged as being elected to serve a three-year term ending in June 2023, and was nominated and elected to serve as the Treasurer of the MCIU Board for the upcoming school year. Maura Burry from the Upper Marion School District was elected to serve as the Board President. William England from Sheltonham was elected as Vice President, and Dr. Eugene Hollis from the Perkyomen Valley School District was elected as Board Secretary. The next meeting is scheduled for August 26. End of report.
Thank you, Mrs. Ramich. Congratulations on your new position as Treasurer.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, and we will move on then to the North Penn Educational Foundation, which is Mrs. Ramich again.
Yes. The Foundation met in an online format on Wednesday, July 8. The trustees were joined by four community members interested in learning more about the work of the Foundation and possibly becoming members of the Board of Trustees. One of the Foundation's newly established strategic calls is to diversify and strengthen its boards, and having put our efforts towards this purpose. The Executive Director, Christine LeBroski, reported that she recently submitted a $10,000 grant application to the Verizon Foundation. If awarded, this grant will fund Overdrive, an online resource for eBooks and audiobooks for students kindergarten through 12th grade. She also brought forth a grant request from the school district to support the Summer Enrichment Program for elementary students. The Foundation unanimously approved funding of grant support for student incentives for participation. An update on the Build a Bag program was also given, indicating that a community, as a committee, is, the committee is still working on how this can happen for the 2020-2021 school year. The Development Committee announced the final numbers for the North Penn Strong Campaign. I'm so pleased to announce that we surpassed our goal for raising money for internet, internet devices by $58. In all, we raised $41,308.09 through the sale of apparel, direct donations, and a grant received just a few weeks ago for $5,000. Thank you to everyone who supported this important cause. The Development Committee scheduled a meeting for Tuesday, July 13, to discuss selling face masks and using proceeds to offset MPSC's possible cost of these items. The Marketing Committee presented cost options for a logo redesign and the production of an annual report, which the Foundation trustees unanimously approved. The Grant Review Committee presented proposed changes in the process and criteria for selecting grants. We hope to roll this out in the 2020-21 school year. Our next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, August 5. For information on the Foundation, please contact Christine LeBroski at the ESC. End of report.
Thank you, Mrs. Ramich. Does anyone have any comments or questions? Okay. Then moving on, we will go to the next report, which is the Legislative Report, which is Mr. McCain, please.
Thank you, Mrs. Stoll. On June 25, the U.S. Department of Education issued a new and legally binding set of expectations for issuing CARES funds, significantly modifying an earlier version released in April. This forced the Pennsylvania Department of Education, or PDE, to change their expectations for how school districts will distribute these funds to non-public schools in their district. The result, in summary, is that while North Penn will still receive over $980,000 from the CARES Act, more of that total will have to be sent to non-public schools in our district. The PDE also released guidance to school districts, which will provide some flexibility in meeting the 180-day or 990-hour requirement for the approaching 2020 to 2021 school year. Section 520.1 of the School Code authorizes the implementation of temporary operations by school districts during times of certain emergency. PDE states that those standards have been met. As an aside, this afternoon, PDE, no, I'm sorry, the Pennsylvania Department of Health also finally issued some guidelines about how to go about reopening schools. So we'll give our team some time to analyze what that means for our plans and move on from there. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. McCain. Does anyone have any comments or questions for Mr. McCain? Mr. Casa, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. McCain, for that report, especially this month with all the changing variables. Just wondering with that, the CARES Act money, so that's federal money that's going to North Penn, that, that amount that you had mentioned?
Yes, indeed. The CARES Act allowed the states to, well, I'll put it this way. They gave the states some leeway about how to send that money down to the districts. The districts then had some guidance on how they would have to spend that money. But as of right now, the standards got a lot more strict. If we're going to use that money for all of our schools, we have to follow a different formula, which takes more money out of our own funds, unfortunately.
And those standards that you mentioned, is that because Harrisburg decides the parameters or DC?
In this case, it was DC changing their parameters. The Pennsylvania Department of Education has, from what I understand, however, voiced their concern about that late, last-minute change, and there might be some legal action coming. But for right now, because things are the way they are and they're happening quickly, we kind of have to go with what's given to us by the national organization, the U.S. Department.
I really appreciate that this is a topic we added even before the pandemic to our board meetings and for the public because it lends that larger context. So I appreciate how you distill so much news, which seems to be coming in every few hours on these topics. My, my gut tells me, and I'm just wondering, Mr. McCain, on, when that CARES Act funding comes through from the feds, it's got strings attached to it. Is Harrisburg essentially in our legislature then just a conduit? And, and really, they're, they're simply handing it off to that end? Does Harrisburg get any credit for raising additional dollars for our school districts?
It's my understanding that the state has somewhat less control over those funds. Mr. Scrocky might understand the situation a little better than I do, might be able to chime in. But from what I understand, those funds are largely out of state control until, like, an update on June 25, they're told otherwise. Mr. Scrock, could you chime in?
That's correct. This is really federal dollars. The state really isn't involved, other than being a conduit, passing through the dollars directly to the school districts.
Thank you. I just wanted to understand then, because, you know, with Pennsylvania being so low with public education funding and with no movement on charter schools and cyber charter, that these additional dollars, really, no credit should go to Harrisburg for this. This is federal dollars due to COVID making its way through Harrisburg to Pennsylvania, correct?
That's exactly correct.
I apologize, Mr. Scrocky. North Penn's share is a small percentage of our budget, but it's extraordinarily important. I believe this moment, Pennsylvania remains ranked 47th in their funding of education in their state. Whether you're talking about kindergarten, pre-K, or the state schools that Pennsylvania is supposed to make more accessible to our students, we fall short in the state of Pennsylvania.
Thank you for clarifying. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. McCain. Mr. Casa? Mrs. Wesley, your, um, Kathy, your mic is not working.
That better?
Yeah, that's much better.
Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you, Kathy.
Now? Okay, so I have to stay on. I have to turn the video off. Is that better?
A little bit. Still kind of going in and out.
Mr. Scrocky, tell me if you can hear me.
It's, it's
I'll just turn it off and circle back later. Thank you. I'll stay off of video. Thanks.
Yep, thank you. All right. If we have no more questions, then we will move on to the Solicitors Report. Mr. Sommers, please.
Thank you, Madam President. My report this evening is to announce that the Board met in an executive session, virtually immediately prior to this evening's meeting, for the purpose of discussing a matter involving the potential purchase of real estate, as well as a personnel matter involving an administrative board. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Sommers. Does anyone have any comments or questions? All right, seeing none, we will move on then to the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Dietrich, please.
Thank you, President Stoll. I recommend adoption of the Consent Agenda items, namely the adoption of Policies First Reading, the repeal of policies, gifts to the district, contracts, alternative placements, student agreements, the medical director, medical and dental examiners, and clerks, and the approval to advertise forbid.
Do I have a motion?
Before, motion, so moved.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions, Mr. Fusco?
Just one. Yes, so in regard to the adoption of policies in the first reading, we are extraordinarily fortunate on this board to have Mr. Casa, a student safety expert, who wanted to provide a little more input into the Dating Violence Policy 252. This is This is a first reading, so even though we're going to go ahead tonight and vote to move forward with that first reading, we're going to actually be reviewing that once again in policy and adding his expertise to help craft some issues with that policy that he has seen. So if anybody happens to read these and understand that that policy is actually going to probably undergo a little bit more change, otherwise, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Fosco. Are there any other comments or questions? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I recommend approval of the agreement of sale between the district and WNPV Incorporated for the purchase of the property located at 1210 Snyder Road, Lansdale, Pennsylvania, Montgomery County Tax Map Parcel as listed, consisting of approximately 13.41 acres for $2,300,000.
Do I have a motion? Motion by Mrs. G and seconded by Mr. Roche. Do you have any comments or questions?
I would like to comment, President Stoll, that, as you know, we became aware that that property was available for purchase. I think the public is aware that WNPV is no longer broadcasting from that property, so the property is available for purchase. And when an adjoining property does become available for purchase, it is very important to evaluate the opportunity to purchase that property before it might be sold to another party for another purpose and subsequently would be more difficult or maybe very impractical to acquire, for example, if a housing development were to be placed on that property. So we did our due diligence to evaluate that property and what use it might provide for the North Penn School District. And as you're well aware, and members of the public are aware, we are in the initial stages of planning a ninth-grade center on the campus of North Penn High School, and that building would create additional impervious surface. And we know that the renovation plan for Crawford Stadium did necessitate a variance that we were already under the necessary open land for stormwater. So adding construction of the ninth-grade center in the property would decrease what is already not enough surface to absorb all of the water, and additional acreage from this property would simplify the plan for rainwater. We also took a look at the traffic patterns, and we know that if we put that ninth-grade center on that property, as we are planning on the North Penn High School property, 1,000 more students on the North Penn High School campus would require close to 130 additional staff members, and this would require additional parking, and we already would hear from many that the parking is barely adequate as is. We know that the North Penn High School campus does struggle to handle the traffic at arrival and dismissal times, and in particular, presently, all of the dismissal traffic must exit onto Valley Forge Road. So ownership of this land would provide an option to develop an exit onto Snyder Road for the portion of our drivers seeking to travel north after leaving our campus. We also know that our bus service center is immediately adjacent to this property, and ownership of this available adjacent property would provide additional options for the traffic of buses and for parking for bus drivers. Also, the matter of athletic fields was carefully considered, and as we know, the athletic field space is presently at a premium, and programs are often lobbying for additional practice time and space to be able to do that. So perhaps additional multipurpose facilities could be a future option on this property. We do know that adding ninth grade to the high school would require additional field space and additional student athletes. And then, North Monco Technical and Career Center is already at capacity for enrollment, and that does pose significant challenges for our middle schools and the rising ninth graders for the 2021 academic year, for example. And while it's not currently in the plans to expand North Monco Technical Career Center, owning that property adjacent to their property does present options for the future. We also know that this property could have potential revenue possibilities. And then finally, there is potential site there. We are talking very earnestly about developing an in-district medical facility to provide high-quality healthcare services for employees that would be at substantial savings to our district, but we do need additional space to establish such a facility, and the existing billing on this property would be evaluated by our medical services providers that would be interested in engaging with us, and it may provide the necessary space for this facility. So these are among the reasons that we determined that we would make the recommendation to purchase this property as it is now available for purchase.
Thank you, Dr. Dietrich. Does anyone have any other comments or questions? Mr. Casa?
And thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Dr. Dietrich, for explaining to the community the multitude of variables that have been considered. I want to thank you and the administration and legal counsel for the due diligence. I think it's also important that, in this time of pandemic, magnifies the problems of when a government does not plan appropriately. And this is a school board that's focused on here and now and the current crisis and what that means to our community members. We also have to focus on the long-term strategic matters that are going to make a difference for this district. And this is a commitment through transparency and through this type of investment to have a much better return on investment for taxpayer dollars, student success, and impact on the community. That's why we make this type of decision, and the timing is always difficult when we have to make such a purchase as this, when we consider the long-term impact through the lens of something like the pandemic crisis. This is why we do things right now, so we don't have to deal with the wrong implications later.
Very well said. Thank you, Mr. Casas. Does anyone else have any comments or questions? Okay, we have a motion on the floor, so all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Dietrich.
I recommend the approval of the personnel items as per the attached.
Do I have a motion?
No move.
Motion by Mrs. G and seconded by Mr. Roche. Are there any comments or questions? Are you all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
And with that action, you will note that we now have three administrative vacancies due to either retirement or resignation, two within the Special Education Department, one within the Curriculum Department. So we will be in continuous communication with the school board as to our plan how to address those vacancies, whether it means restructuring within the administrative ranks or simply filling those vacancies with new hires. Our next item is in regard to the equity statement and beliefs of the board. Recommend approval of the equity statement and beliefs of the North Penn School District Board of School Directors.
Do I have a motion?
A move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fosco and seconded by Mrs. G. So I just wanted to comment about the equity statement and the anti-racism resolution that are on the agenda for this evening. We had discussed both at last week's work session, and one of the audience members, he was, I think, the first-time audience member, he objected because he said something to be a fact that his children never experienced anything negative at North Penn, and every child is welcome at North Penn. And so I just wanted to back up and go over what we've done in regards to equity over the last two and a half years, because I think we've been working in it for two and a half years, and I just kind of assume everybody's been following along, but that was not the case last week. So I just wanted to review how we got here and why we think this is important. So, well, his children may not have had anything but positive experiences at North Penn, as mine did. We know that that's not the case for every child coming to North Penn. And that's not just North Penn, that's not a reflection of North Penn, but it's just more of a reflection on our society, and we are just a microcosm of that society. So when we ran for office, we ran on a platform that included doing what we could to make equity for all students a priority, and we've done several things already with our administration, which are, we included hiring a Director of Diversity and Curriculum, Dr. Jan Waters. We've expanded our hiring pool in an effort to hire staff to be more representative of the communities that they serve. We've had lots of board members go out to several places in our community, including the North Penn Mosque, Indian Temple, the Christian Coptic Church, and we've had the opportunity to speak with and listen to minority constituents. And as anybody who's followed us, people know that this board likes to hold forums. Our first forum that we had was a Safe Schools Forum after the tragedy in Parkland, Florida. We had two infrastructure forums to address our many infrastructure needs. And in November of 2018, we had a CARES Forum, which was a conversations around race and equity. And during this forum, members of the community came in to speak, and we split up into smaller groups, and these community members had a chance to tell us their stories. They got to speak to teachers, administrative staff, board members, and we had the opportunity to hear people's stories. So listening to them is what has guided our work over the last two and a half years. And we've listed these goals in both the three-year comprehensive plan and the cultural proficiency plan, and both of those are available on our North Penn website for people to view if they are interested. We are continuing our work tonight by approving the equity statement and the anti-racism resolution. The equity statement is the first step towards developing an equity policy and an action plan, and that will help us make equity part of the foundation in all our decision-making processes. Our goal is to make sure that every child is welcome and feels safe and secure at North Penn, and that they all have equal opportunities to achieve. So that is why both of those items are on the agenda for this evening. Does anyone else have any comments or questions in regard to the equity statement or to the anti-racism resolution?
Make a note that both the equity statement and the anti-racism resolution are certainly a result of everything that, Madam President, stated, as well as a collaboration between student voices and agency, administrators, teachers, and cadre members, and really the work, this is not just a result of one incident, but what we believe and how we want to move forward, and frankly, our commitment as a school board to affirming and recognizing and addressing forms of racism and ethnic oppression, and beyond that, focusing on immediate actions that we could take even this summer to work on providing a more equitable learning environment when our students return. So I hope that those who might look at the equity statement will notice that we did identify specific actions that we were going to take this summer. Mr. Fosco talked about two of those earlier that have already been acted upon. In addition to that, looking at a biannual review of our academic socio-emotional process and discipline data. We've already had climate surveys. We will continue to use that to inform, use that data to inform how we move forward. A commitment to our staff with professional development and a creation of building-level steering committees for each school, and much of this is already in the works. So I encourage anyone who looks at this to please involve yourself and engage with us around this work, because this is work we're committed to, and we want to be, we want to work with the community to move this forward, because while this is a national conversation, this is also a local and community conversation about doing what's best for kids and putting students first.
Thank you, Mrs. G. Does anyone else? Mr. Casa?
Thank you, Madam President. Mrs. G, you just inspire me with that context to make sure, you know, that the community understands within this context, this is not a black issue, this is not a liberal issue, this is not a conservative issue, this is a right versus wrong, this is a justice issue. And that's what we mean when we talk about equity. It's all of us getting involved to pull in the right direction for the progress that's necessary for the entire community to make progress together. So it could be uncomfortable conversations, there's a lot to learn. I can attest to that. I'm someone who's still learning and being made to feel uncomfortable. It's important that, as a North Penn community, we lead and don't follow, and that's what these statements are about.
Thank you, Mr. Casa. Dr. Lewis Campbell?
Yeah, I just wanted to also echo the sentiments that you've already heard. And what's unique about what we have done is that having students speak to us, as Mr. Fosco mentioned the other night, and we also had students speak to us in February, and having students speak to the school board is not new in this district. I can think about over the years when students have come and have expressed what has gone on with their learning in the North Penn School District, and that was it. The difference and what's unique is about is that we have a school board that is intentional and strategic about taking action. To see that we've done that is what this community has been looking for for years. So I'm happy about that, and I'm glad that our school board took the extra step, because people are tired of talking and saying, they wanted action, and the action has been taken. And I thank you for that.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis Campbell. Does anyone else have any comments or questions?
I would also like to thank Dr. Russo in particular for all her work that she's done over the last couple of years with this subject. So thank you very much for all your advocacy, we really appreciate it.
I would be remiss if I did not thank Dr. Russo personally, as well as Dr. Bauer, their leadership around this, specifically Dr. Russo, but honestly, both of them, and even in us saying, you know, said things to her, like rip the Band-Aid off, let's press fast forward, we have to move around issues of equity. And it helps to know that we have leaders and administrators in the district that feel as strongly about it as we do, because we can't be everywhere doing everything. And I appreciate the work around specifically our goal and the leadership from Dr. Russo on that. So thank you for bringing that up, Stoll. I needed to thank you personally, Dr. Russo, for that.
I'm going to go ahead.
I appreciate that, and I just wanted to also say, you know, that on behalf of the administrative team, that we certainly share the same commitment as the board, and just to thank everyone else who is a part of that executive committee and my colleague, Dr. Waters, as well, who co-leads that committee with me. So thank you for your recognition and commitment, and we feel the same way.
I just wanted to take two seconds and just echo that. Thank you, Dr. Bauer. Thank you, Dr. Russo. It makes the job a lot easier for this board to move this forward when you're working with people who believe very much in what the work is all about, and it's evident that you both do and that you both have a commitment to this work, and it makes our job easier. So thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? And of course, Dr. Dietrich, thank you to you as well for leading the whole administrative team. So, all right, so we have a motion on the floor for approving the equity statement and belief. No further comments. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
I recommend approval of the resolution supporting the development of an anti-racist school climate in the North Penn School District.
Do I have a motion?
No move.
No move.
Motion by Mr. Casa and seconded by Mrs. Ramesh. Do we have any more comments or questions?
All right, seeing none. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. So one more, right?
I recommend approval of the North Penn High School return-to-play procedures for athletics and marching nights, as stated in the attached document.
Do I have a motion?
No move.
Motion by Dr. Lewis Campbell and seconded by Mrs. Wesley. Any comments or questions?
I do want to note here that in last month's, or the last action meeting, Dr. Sigler noted that there was not significant detail about the auditorium, and that has been included, and we did share at the last meeting that this document will continue to come before the board as it gets updated and as we return to play. So. So you'll see this again, and this month, it does have more detail about the auditorium.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. All right, so all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Dietrich. Moving on then to the financial report. Mrs. Skrocky, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Couple of quick updates. First off, for our residents, just a reminder that the 2021 real estate tax bills have been mailed out. They should be in your mailbox by now. If you are a property owner in North Penn School District and you have not received your tax bill, please contact your elected tax collector in the municipality in which you live. You should have received your bill by now. Also, just a reminder too, for those that might be eligible, we are accepting applications now for our 2021 real estate tax rebate program. Thanks to the board for enhancing that program to a 50% rebate amount. This is for eligible renters and property owners, and includes hybrid property owners as well. And also this year, for the first time, we are reimbursing 50%, including the supplemental amounts that may be received by the state. On the real estate tax bill issue, getting back to that again, again, just another reminder that for the first time, the North Penn School District has six installments where taxpayers can take advantage and spread out their payments from July through December. In order to start that program, you need to make your first payment, which would be one-sixth of the tax bill that would be due by the end of July. Also, monthly update on our school nutrition services program by their feeding program. We're actually up to 241,482 meals now that have been served to children since our shutdown in mid-March. So this is incredible, the amount of work that's been done since March by the School Nutrition Services Department. And again, just a reminder that the meals are provided on Mondays and Thursdays from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Hatfield, Inglewood, Pendale, Cope, and Oak Park. Also this week, we were excited that we also distributed fresh produce boxes that were courtesy of the United States Department of Agriculture. So we hope to continue that as long as the supply is available throughout the summer. And please follow the North Penn School Nutrition Services Department on Twitter, @NorthPennSNS. In terms of our financials for the month of June, our fiscal year did end June 30th, but we still are receiving revenue and paying expenses that go back to the 1920 fiscal year. So we won't have our final numbers for the fiscal year until the audit is complete, and that won't be until October. But at the present time, we are projecting about a $3 million use of fund balance for the 1920 fiscal year. Our cash receipts in June totaled 14.2 million. Our expenditures in June were 38.5 million, and our available funds at the end of the month were $64.8 million. Last year, we had roughly $1.4 million more in a cash balance as of the end of June. So again, this would be consistent with use of fund balance. So that is the treasure report. I'm asking, recommending approval for the treasure report for the month of June.
Thank you, Mrs. Skrocky. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mr. Costa. Are there any comments or questions?
A question, Madam President. Mrs. Skrocky, on this innovative tax relief program for seniors, how many school districts since September, I think is when the Philadelphia Inquirer covered this program, how many school districts have replicated that since?
You know, it's funny, I should have this committed to memory. There's so many, I'm starting to lose track of the number. But I think since September, there are eight new school districts that implemented the real estate tax rebate program, completely replicating North Penn's program, because I was individually contacted by all eight school districts. And it's interesting, the majority are from this particular region, but we have districts as far away as Pittsburgh, Mountain Lebanon School District, outside of Pittsburgh contacted me. We have Greater Latrobe Area School District, which is also out in Western Pennsylvania. But then we have a number of other local districts from Perkyomen Valley to Colonial to Upper Dublin to Owen J. Roberts to Penridge to, boy, again, I lose track of them, there's been so many that have reached out. So we're really pleased that other districts had an interest in replicating our program and providing relief to eligible homeowners, because that relief is not coming from the state level.
Thank you, Mr. Skrocky. I hope that you continue to lose track, that would be a good problem. Hopefully, we won't have to deal with this in years ahead, because there'll be better reforms out of Harrisburg. But for the time being, just can't thank you enough and the administration for making sure that this innovative program was not only identified and developed, but that we have continued to expand it every single year as a school board. So thank you very much and congratulations.
Well, thank you and the board for your support of the program. I think it's absolutely awesome for the number of individuals that are able to take advantage of it.
Mr. Skrocky, I also just want to thank you for, and I want to let you know that I continue to hear really positive feedback about the work of the School Nutrition Services team, and those fresh produce boxes this week were just a huge hit. And I think it's just so wonderful that it's a win-win, and there aren't many situations during this pandemic that we could say is a win-win, and those produce boxes are a win for area farmers, and they're a win for North Penn families. Getting to see pictures of the boxes and what families are then using and cooking and using those items for has been really fun to see, and just continues to be a highlight and continues to be a sign of the strength of our community and how we really pull together. So that team has just been a shining example that kind of keeps us all going, and we're really truly grateful for their work.
Thank you. And under Melissa Froelich's leadership, that department has just gone above and beyond the call of duty since March. And just a reminder again, please, you mentioned about the pictures, please retweet any of the posts on Twitter from the School Nutrition Services, because you never know that one of your tweets might reach out to another individual that perhaps doesn't know about the program, did not hear about the program, or they might be willing to help support the program like we've experienced in the past. So you never know when your retweet might reach someone and spark some level of interest.
And Steve, I'm very happy. And Steve, I'm very happy that we're going to continue this program into the fall, because I know a lot of our community members are counting on that. Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions?
I have one. And, Mr. Skrocky, and again, I'm going to reiterate what Mrs. Ramon said, Mrs. Ramon said, and Strakasa, and thank you so much for all you do regarding the lunches, the produce, and then also what we've done with the real estate taxes. Going back to, and I was paying attention, but I want to understand a bit more about the fund balance, and you expect the fund balance to be $3 million in October, is that right?
Yes, for the 1920 fiscal year, Ms. Wesley, at this point, we're projecting a fiscal year utilization of about $3 million for the 1920 year. And that's actually quite better than what the original budget was. The original budget called for use of fund balance over $6 million. So we did come in well under on the expenses this year, partially helped out by the shutdown. Our revenues unfortunately came in under budget on a couple of key areas, including the realty transfer tax, earned income tax, and investment income. So, you know, one kind of offset the other, but we are projecting about a $3 million use of fund balance.
Thank you, Mrs. Skrocky. If no one else has any further comments or questions, I can do the motion on the floor.
Okay, and is that, I mean, is that at the high level or?
Kathy, I'm sorry, can't hear you, it's going in and out again.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm just going to stay on video and audio and I'll throw back later.
I think you can chat, if you want to send us your questions in the chat. But yeah, it's not a very good audio, sorry. So anyone, if there's no further comments or questions, I think we have a motion on the floor. So all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Next item, we have the sanction and approval of invoices. I'm recommending approval of, or recommending ratification, I should say, of dispersments for the month of June. They totaled $42,526,940.05.
Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Fusco, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Lewis Campbell. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the last voting item under the finance report would be the budget transfers for the month of June, and recommending approval of the budget transfers, which are attached in board docs in the amount of $208,028 even.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mr. Costa. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Skrocky.
Thank you. And just a quick note, the financial reports are included there, and I did provide an update on the reports in board docs and the executive content since the July Finance Committee meeting was canceled. So thank you, Madam President.
Yes, and thank you very much for those detailed reports, they were very helpful. All right, other business, does anyone have anything to discuss under other business? I see nothing, and then we will move on to the second audience of citizens. Mr. Gilmar, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make public comments?
This will be the time, anybody that's watching is an attendee, if you'd like to make any public comment, raise your blue hand, and once I see that here, I'll call on you and open up your microphone. I see no blue hands.
Okay.
And I think that's it for public comment tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmar. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a nice evening, everyone.